Okay, I'd like to call the City of Elkhorn Common Council, June 19th, 5:30. Meeting to order. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to all the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bruce Lechner.
Here.
Tim Sharoda.
Here.
Gary Payson Jr.
Here.
Ron Dunwood is absent. Scott McClory.
Here.
Ken Minnow.
Here.
Carol Young.
Here.
Public comment. Anybody here for public comment tonight? Okay, I just gotta read a statement and then I'll have you come up to the podium. Public comments are limited to three minutes each. The public may speak on any item on a city concern, whether or not the topic included on this agenda. However, if the topic does not pertain to an item listing on the council agenda, the council is not permitted to address or discuss the matter during this meeting. Under open meeting laws, the council must notice an item on the agenda to allow discussion on that matter. If council is not permitted to discuss your concerns, your comments will be considered and may be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. If you can come up. We do have a three-minute limit, too, please.
Yeah, I was aware of that. I'll make sure.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. If you could state your name for the record.
Tony Coletti. I represent New Beginnings. I wanted to just talk briefly about matters on your agenda tonight. Text amendment to the T1 zoning district. And I guess I just wanted to say, I know that the recommendation from the Plan Commission was to reject this particular amendment. I guess I'm hoping that the Common Council will reconsider that or consider adopting it. In the first instance, one of the reasons is that we're asking for this simply to facilitate a couple of dwelling units in the New Beginnings building for victims of domestic violence. I think it's, and I'll talk about it in a second, but I think it's a worthwhile thing that if you can possibly facilitate would be a good idea. And I guess the substantive reasons why I think that you can approve this is that it's not, approval over this would not undermine the city's policies or the zoning district or anything like that. For example, if you permit amendment of this to allow for a conditional use for dwelling units in a business with above a basement or above the ground level, how many projects like that are really gonna come in front of you for that type of thing? I mean, as a professional, nobody's gonna wanna meet me in the basement of a building, which is what you basically would be saying would be approved. I don't think too many retail outlets are gonna be asking for that kind of permission either. So I think you could very easily approve this by just saying that if you allow ground-level units above a business, that's gonna limit effectively everything to just basements. Similarly, if you decided to just say, we'll allow it as part of a business on the ground floor, that means you're preserving the intent of the zoning ordinance. You're still continuing that mixed use in the building itself. You're not only not undermining the mixed use of the district, but you're continuing the mixed use for that particular building. So I think if you would seriously consider just taking either of those options, you would be facilitating something that would really be helpful to the community, especially those, the victims that would end up living there for a short period of time. And so I guess that's why I would ask that you consider that and hopefully approve it tonight. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is everybody in council fine with everything in the consent agenda due as one? Okay, so we have a council meeting minutes of June 5th, 2023. We have the pay application number one from Rock Road Companies for the 2023 East Centaria Street reconstruction in the amount of $632,272.22. We have the change order number one for the 2023 Wright Street Partial Reconstruction Project in the amount of $6,269.20. We have pay application number nine, the final payment for Payne and Dolan regarding the 2021 Elkhorn Street Improvement Program in the amount of $20,362.45. And we have the pay application number four, final payment for Payne and Dolan regarding the 2022 Elkhorn Street and Parking Improvements in the amount of $2,191.25. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the, all the items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Ken Minnow.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Motion passed on all items on consent agenda. Next, consideration and recommendation to pay the bills. The bills this month was $2,970,895.65. Do I have a motion?
I so.
Have a motion to pay the bills? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Is there any discussion or questions about the bills in your packet? Roll call, please.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Ken Minnow.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Motion approved to pay the bills. Next, report of city officers. Mayor, I just got a couple things. Just a reminder, council, July meetings will be July 10th and 24th, with July 4th being on the holiday week. So we got the 10th and 24th. The deputy clerk and the HR generalist positions are posted. The deputy clerk will be open until filled, and the generalist closes July 10th at 8:00 PM. So, updates on those.
8:00 AM, sorry.
Oh, 8:00 AM, I'm sorry. And next, I have years of service recommendation for David Fladden. He's been with the Fire Department and ambulance from 5/2008 to current, 6/23, so 15 years of service. So, Dave, I'd like to thank you for your years of service and continuing in Elkhorn with everything you've been doing and helping us out, so.
Thank you.
I do have a little certification and...
Yeah, I always have something to say.
Into the mic.
Gotta go up to the mic.
Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, thank you very much for this. I appreciate it. I truly appreciate the opportunity to be recognized for the years that I've been here, but I think that, with that said, I played a small part in what we ultimately did and provided for the community. I had the opportunity to work with a tremendous number of great people over the years, many who continue to still work for the department, obviously Rod. But for the most part, the thanks for what we do should not fall on me, it should fall on the men and women of the department. They're the ones that come to work each and every day. They're the ones that continue to do the job each and every day, and I was but a small part of that. They made my life easy in doing the role that I ultimately did. So while I appreciate the thanks that you offer, and I really truly do appreciate it, I again was a small part. So thank you.
Thank you again, Dave. Next, Adam, City Administrator.
Well, that's a somewhat of a good segue to my comment, because I did wanna thank our EMS service, as well as Shane Kurth, Mike Dean, Bryant Linell, and the pool employees who helped with a unfortunate contractor incident last week. So thank you to the EMS for responding to that in a very timely manner, and thanks to the Water Department employees who were there to help provide first aid prior to the EMS getting there. So, thank you to everybody for that, as well as the pool employee, who unfortunately I am trying to figure out the name of who that was. Matt, do you know?
I don't know.
Oh.
Sorry.
It was the pool manager, Sarah Spurley.
Okay, so thank you, Lacey. So, yeah, the pool manager. So, everybody did a great job with that. And a couple other just updates. One, we have a joint review board meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00, just to talk about the project plan amendment, which you guys have approved and recommended that the joint review board approve. So, that'll be tomorrow. And then we'll be also holding our annual meeting during that meeting to check that box for the summer. We also, we had a meeting with a potential developer about residential development on West Market Street. There's that parcel there. There's been renewed interest from a couple developers. Apparently, that property owners reduced the price. So, we've got a couple more meetings scheduled in the next two weeks with other developers. So we will see what happens on that. Certainly keep you updated. And then just wanted to mention that next Tuesday, we've got the interregimental Cooperation Council meeting with Walworth County. So I'll be there next Tuesday to be representative of the city on that. So, those are my updates, in case anybody has any questions for me or comments.
No questions? Okay, thank you, Adam. Report of city boards and community partners. Fire advisory? Rod, we have one this month, or? No? No. End of July. Okay. End of July for the next fire advisory meeting. Library.
I'm gonna defer to Chad.
Good evening. I'm happy to announce that on June 14th, the library board approved the new Library 2024-2026 Strategic Plan, which appeared in your packet. The committee and I really feel that this plan will direct and inform the library on all major planning processes for the next three years. The plan offers a direct summation of library values, along with broad strategic initiatives that allow for achievable goals, while providing the library with the flexibility to adapt to our changing and growing community. So thank you, and if you have any questions for me on the strategic plan, I'd be happy to answer them. Thanks.
Thank you, Chad. Next, Recreation Advisory.
Yeah, there will be no meeting in July for Park and Rec Board, and the next one will take place in August.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Chamber of Commerce?
I'll refer to Chris.
Good evening. As you all know, we have beautiful weather, so that means summer is upon us. We had a great weekend, last weekend, with the dairy breakfast and multiple things going on at the fairgrounds. Right now, Saturdays on the Square is every Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. Thank you, Scott, for always coming down and seeing Mrs. Darlene. But we've had a great turnout for that. We have vendors usually going almost the whole Wisconsin street block, which is good. I know that we've had some questions in regards to, we've never called it, it used to be called a farmer's market. We do not call it a farmer's market. We call it Saturdays on the Square because it is multiple vendors. We allow nonprofits, crafters, vendors, commercial, and we do have farm market people. But at this point in time, it's not prevalent with the farm market, so it comes in the next couple weeks. We have many events going on in the area, and if you guys have any questions or concerns what the chamber is doing, but right now, we are actually booking all of our winter advertisement for 2023 and 2024. I hate doing that when it's in the middle of summer. So, but if anybody has any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions, anybody? Next, Community Grant Writer, which they updated in your packet. Everybody seen that? Okay, moving on. Committee reports. Human Resource Committee.
The Human Resource Committee met today, and we interviewed some possible candidates for treasurer, and we made a recommendation to the mayor and to the city administrator.
Thank you, Carol. Unfinished business. Discussion and possible decision regarding proposed ordinance number 23-07, in ordinance amending the Elkhorn Municipal Code at Section 17.5-1 regarding zoning districts in which emergency residential shelters are a conditional use. This is for a second reading. We had our city attorney, what you guys recommended to change, correct, Ward?
Yes.
Everybody seen the changes?
I would move to approve. We have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-07. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for ordinance number 23-07. Moving on to new business. Discussion and possible decision regarding petition from New Beginnings, APFV Incorporated for zoning text amendment to allow as a conditional use residential dwelling on the ground floor in T1 Downtown Transitional District. This did come through Plan Commission, and it was recommended to deny from Plan Commission?
I would make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next, discussion and possible decision regarding request from Daniel and Deborah Machetti, owners of DAD Storage, to rezone N5802, Highway 12, from B6 Commercial Business District to M1 Light Manufacturing District. This did go through Plan Commission and was recommended to deny from Plan Commission?
I'll make a motion to deny it.
We have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed to deny the rezone at N5802. Next, we have discussion and possible decision regarding proposed contract amendment, amendment number one with Foth Infrastructure and Environment LLC to increase scope of engineering, design, and construction engineering services for 2023 South Wright Street Partial Reconstruction Project, and to provide loan application and loan administrative services for safe drinking water and clean water fund loans for project. That was all in your packet?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Ken Minnow.
Yes.
Motion passed. Next, we have discussion and possible decision regarding proposed contract with Foth Infrastructure and Environment LLC to provide loan application and loan administrative services for the safe drinking water and clean water fund loans in support of 2023 East Centaria Street Reconstruction Project Phase 1.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Ken Minnow.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Motion passed regarding proposed contract. Next, discussion and possible decision regarding proposed contract with Foth Infrastructure and Environment LLC to provide the following: engineering design and construction engineering services for the 2024 Lakeland Water Treatment Plant Rehab Project, and to provide loan application and loan administrative services for the safe drinking water and clean water fund loans for project, and also engineering design and construction engineering services for the 2024 NEWTP Project, and to provide loan application and loan administrative services for safe drinking water and clean water funds, loans for project.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Ken Minnow.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Motion passed. Next, moving on to F, discussion and possible decision regarding proposed second amended resolution 23-12, declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing for the Lakeland Water Treatment Plant expansion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve resolution 23-12. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Ken Minnow.
Yes.
Motion passed on resolution 23-12. Next, discussion and possible decision regarding proposed amended resolution 23-16, declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing for the Northeast Water Treatment Plant Sewer and Water Extension.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve resolution 23-16. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Ken Minnow.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Motion passed for resolution 23-16. Discussion and possible decision regarding proposed resolution 23-22, a resolution declaring city's compliance maintenance activities pursuant to Wisconsin Department of National Resources Administrative Code, Chapter NR208. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve resolution 23-22.
We have a motion to approve resolution 23-22. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Ken Minnow.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Motion passed on resolution 23-22. Discussion and possible decision regarding execution of intergovernmental agreement with Walcomat on the subject of sanitary sewer cleaning and televising.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any question or discussion on this agreement with Walcomat? Roll call, please.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Ken Minnow.
Yes.
Motion passed on interregimental governmental agreement with Walcomat. Discussion and possible decision regarding execution of three state and municipal financial agreements for the state highway project. One is State Highway 11 from Church Street to Cobb Road. The other is State Highway 67 from Interstate 43 westbound ramps to East Walworth Street, and also State Highway 67 from North Lincoln to US Highway 12.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
I just wanna mention, if that's okay, that so for these three projects that they will start invoicing because we, the city is responsible for 25% of the design fees, so that process will take quite a few years. So we'll start to see some invoices. It'll start to come in maybe as soon as October, but they're saying probably most likely in December. So we'll just have to work closely with the department to try to realize those costs as they come up over the next probably five years while they develop these projects. So, they're starting the quote-unquote "final scoping" phase right now. So, at some point, we'll look to probably incorporate additional work into these projects, but we would just bring that to the council during the budget process, so.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Ken Minnow.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Motion passed. Discussion and possible decision regarding quotes for July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024 for reinsurance policy for city employee health coverage.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Carol Young.
Yes.
Ken Minnow.
Yes.
Tim Sharoda.
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Motion passed for the city employee health coverage reinsurance policy. Next, discussion and possible decision regarding authorization of Police Officer Renner to become a member of the Sheriff's Office Multi-Jurisdictional Team.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next, discussion and possible decision regarding the temporary Class B beer licenses for the Walworth County Agricultural Society at the Walworth County Fairgrounds Rodeos, July 23rd, 2023, 1:00 to 9:00 PM, and October 8th, 2023, 1:00 to 9:00 PM. Any questions, concerns, or motion?
I would just say to the mayor, we put this on the, under new business, just because we've gotten several concerns, calls about the noise levels for these specific events. I know I got a couple calls. I know the PD, PD did right afterwards. And so, we just wanted to, you know, make the council aware of it, because obviously this is a, seems to be a continuing matter of public concern. I know when we recently met with Harvest Point South Subdivision, HOA, they mentioned that some of their, you know, homeowners have expressed concerns about noise levels. So, that's why it's on the agenda for you guys to talk about further.
And I know Council Larry is here. If we do have any questions, concerns towards Larry?
I guess I'd be interested. Are you, Larry, you familiar with the complaints, and have you got a plan to address them?
Yes.
Yeah, can you come, we'd have it for the record.
Yeah, I was made aware of the complaints. Police came out, it was on Memorial Day. There was a noise complaint. An officer came out, asked them to turn it down, which they did. And I guess my comments would be relative to other events that happened at the fairgrounds. It was not as loud, and by quite a bit. And I thought the event was actually very well managed. It was managed within the parameters of the temporary beer permit that was granted by the city. It ended on time. And as a facility, we were pleased with the way it was managed, and pleased with the way all their personnel managed themselves. These are vital events for the fairgrounds financially, as are all of them. Helps us pay for, and our mission is to maintain facilities for ag education and to also entertain Elkhorn and the greater Walworth County area. And maintaining those buildings is expensive. And, you know, infrastructure projects, as you know, are very expensive, and it's important, you know, that we are able to earn this income. You know, a lot of fairgrounds are owned by their respective county, and maintained by their respective county, and sometimes both the city and the county. And I know the county's grateful that they don't have to manage the fairgrounds or keep the maintenance up on that facility. And we kinda are, too. But, you know, it's important that we're able to hold these events at the fairgrounds so we can pay our bills and pay for repairs and pay for construction, so we can do the things that we do for free. And we do a lot of things that are free for the community. And we spend a lot of money on projects that we get no reimbursement for, for the greater community, whether it be premium payments for kids for showing at the fair. Shoot, we have projects where kids win $5,000 bucks for building the best birdhouse, you know? And this year, the Pinewood Derby with $5,000 in prize money, all to get kids to work on projects with mentors and improve their path to being good citizens in our communities. So, I would hope that you take into consideration that the event last Memorial Day on a decimal meter was way less than other events like monster trucks or tractor pulls, and much, much less than flat track motorcycle racing, about 30 decimals less. So, that's all my comment. We wanna be good neighbors, but we are fairgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Council? Any other questions or concerns, or? Would you, would you like to speak, sir?
Yes.
If you could, please come with a microphone and state your name.
Ray Muth, I was here last, at the last meeting. Maybe the decimals are down, but eight and nine hours of this solid is up. The chief, I've talked to him. He lives over in Sunset. He could hear it like he was standing there. Everybody in our subdivision could hear it like they were standing there. I'm not against the fair. Like I told you last time, I respect the fact that they have the events. We had the tractor pulls, I believe it was last Saturday or something. Yeah, they got loud for about 35 seconds and never gone. You know, that's not the problem. But when you hear this music going for eight or nine hours, and the guy, one guy yelling, and the other guy who's ever on the other speakers with the bands making all this racket, and I talked to some individuals from the fair, and I understand...
and I understand that they moved the speakers out, further out into the yards, out to the field where the bands are. So, again, this should all be taken into consideration. I know the fair does a lot of good things, and I'm not against that. But this constant, this eight or nine hours of solid music and this yelling, that's not an answer. It's not the decimals. It's the eight and nine hours of it. So, I hope you take that into consideration also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Oh, we have another? Yep, go ahead, Larry. Come on back up. Sorry, I didn't see your hand up. Thank you, Scott.
I did listen or watch the video from the last city council meeting. Heard Mr. Muse's comments. Also saw the email that was sent to the city. And there are some things that I just want to clarify on his comments. We didn't move speakers further out into the, anywhere where they are normally. There were some circumstances that can create sound to move a different direction. And that particular night, the winds were not what the prevailing winds normally are in Elkhorn, Wisconsin. The prevailing winds in the summertime are from the southwest. And that particular evening, they were coming from the southeast, heading directly towards that subdivision. And so, and that rarely happens, but it did. And so, it can change who hears it and who doesn't. As far as eight or nine hours, the gates opened at 1:00. The music, they probably just, they just had like a CD playing until probably 3:00, and then the band started. The music, Mexican music is a lot like polka music. It really has the same beat, the same thing. The yelling and screaming quite possibly was the brass section. I think there were 10 brass musicians playing trumpets and trombones and all of that in the band. And when they're, you know, playing quite loud or hitting a high note or something like that, it can sound like screaming. My guess is half those instruments were made right here in Elkhorn. But at any rate, we are fairgrounds, and things happen. The tractor pulls last Saturday went till 10:30 p.m. Did we receive any noise complaints? Monster trucks in the evening, no complaints. Flat track motorcycle racing, no complaints. And this one's not as loud. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Larry.
Council members? Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve, but do ask that the neighbors, fairgrounds and neighborhoods work together towards, you know, the better good of the city. You know, if there's an issue, let's work it out versus, you know, getting the police involved and going back and forth as we're having here. Let's work together towards serving the community would be my ask with my motion.
So, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further questions or discussion?
Just to be clear, I want to make sure I understand. The motion doesn't have any conditions on it. You're making suggestions.
Suggestion is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
Yep.
So, we have a motion and a second?
Scott? I just had a question for Larry. Is there any way, even minimally, that we can do anything with diffusing of the speakers so they're not like heading towards the city? Or are you already doing that and that's the best we can do? Just curious.
I don't think it's the best we can do. I think we can work on it. One thing, if you've all been in the grandstand area, the stage is like 90 feet wide. The grandstands are 350 feet wide. The stage is kind of in the center, pointing right at that tall structure. If I work with the sound companies a little bit, maybe to have them turn the speakers so they hit more the center of the grandstand rather than towards the outside of the grandstand, I'd like to try that, see if that helps out.
Thank you. I think that's where, I think I was just basically saying what you were saying.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're in agreement. Thank you. That's a first.
Any other discussion?
Tim would like to add.
Oh, I just wanted to real quick say, I can attest, oh, I'll get up here. I can attest to what Larry's saying because during that event, I live on Lincoln Street, and in my backyard, it was like really loud and whatever. So, I got in my car and went around to the water tower at the fairgrounds, and at the water tower, I couldn't hear it, and it's right there. So, it just depends on the east wind. So, it's that much. I was really surprised.
Thank you, Tim.
So, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Rule call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Carol Young?
Yes.
Scott McClory?
Yes.
Tim Sharoda?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Motion passed to approve the temporary Class B beer licenses for the 23rd, July 23rd, 2023, and October 8th, 2023, from 1:00 to 9:00 for the rodeos. Next, we'll convene, we'll adjourn into closed session, and then we will reconvene into open session. Do I have a motion to adjourn into closed session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we are back into open session. Do I have a motion for any possible action?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the full council that we select and make a conditional offer to the selected candidate from the HR committee.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to move forward. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.